Just think of the main, the subjects we can put on the consent agenda. Consent agenda will be just one. The consent agenda will just be able to put way more items on the consent agenda. So I'll have this and put them on the regular.
Yeah.
It's now it's obviously that car is over there. Get a regular. You guys ready? All right.
It is. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock and it is time for the regular meeting of the Holland City Council for September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd. Peters. Garcia.
Here.
Trithui.
Here.
Arnshorst.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you Kathy. Uh, we're gonna begin this meeting, uh, this evening the way we have for many years. Uh, first with an opening prayer, uh, this evening by council member Garcia, immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance. Uh, and we would ask you to join us if you would.
Good gracious and faithful father. We come to you this, this evening, uh, I think with gratitude, uh, first and foremost for the opportunity to gather here in the council chambers this evening together with, uh, these ladies and gentlemen, uh, as we prepare to conduct some business on behalf of the city. Grateful for the opportunity, uh, to serve the city in this way. Grateful for, uh, the teams that we, that we have, uh, working, uh, at the city. Grateful for the opportunity to have celebrated yesterday afternoon, uh, after a long, uh, year and a half, two years, uh, of not being able to gather in that way. And so we, uh, we recognize that it's, that it's been a challenging time and continues to be in many different ways. But grateful to be in the city that is resilient, uh, that continues, uh, to strive, that continues to progress, that continues to, uh, to seek, uh, guidance. And so this evening, I also ask, uh, just as the scriptures say, uh, to ask for wisdom when we, when we need it, uh, when we lack it. And so come asking that you would impart wisdom, uh, to us as we discern, uh, the various decisions, uh, before us today, but also in the weeks to come, uh, and in, in the, the future ahead of us. And we pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, next are our consent agenda items. Uh, these items are considered to be fairly routine and they have been previously reviewed by council as part of our regular council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion, uh, unless there's a member of the audience or a member of city council that would like an item to be taken off of the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. And if so, it'll be placed in their, in its regular sequence in the regular agenda. Uh, but before asking if anyone wants an item removed, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Item four A, absence is excused. Council member Peters, Byrd, approval of minutes, September one, regular meeting and September eight, two thousand and twenty-one, study session. Item four C, Osev Office. Four D, Holland Board of Public Works, Greenlee Substation Surrounding Land Lease Agreement with Country Corners Farm LLC. Four E, City Clerk, Claim Filed Against the City. Four F, Transportation Services, approved proposed preliminary engineering budget for the Country Club Road Reconstruction Project. Four H, Transportation Services, Set Hearing for Final Adoption of Tenth Street Snowmelt Assessment Rule, Adopt Resolution. Four I, Community Neighborhood Services, Update Chapter Six to Reflect Changes to the FEMA Flood Insurance Maps, Final Adoption, October sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Four J, Finance, January Financial Reports. Four K, Management and Administrative Services, Reappointments of Official Representatives, Tulip Time Board of Directors and Holland Historical Trust Board of Trustees. Four L, Management and Administrative Services, Revocable License Agreement, Projecting Sign, Forty-five East Eight Street. Four M, Management and Administrative Services, Revocable License Agreement, Poll Sign, Eight-Five-Three, Washington Avenue. Four N, Management and administrative services, Downtown Group, DDA Parking Lot Lease Renewal. Four O, Management and Administrative Services, Approval of City Hall Third Floor Renovation Bid. Four P, Management and Administrative Services, Approval of Purchase of City Hall Third Floor Office Furniture.
Thank you Kathy. Is there any member of the audience who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda items?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Uh, move by Trithui, is there support?
Support.
Support by Garcia, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Trithui.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you Kathy. Uh, next is our public comment period. Uh, we provide an opportunity for public comment at every one of our regular meetings and our study sessions. Uh, under the Open Meetings Act, we like, uh, one where required, but also we like to receive comments from the public. Uh, we welcome comments, uh, on any subject other than something that may have a public hearing in it later in the meeting. Uh, and during our regular meetings, we limit public comment to five minutes and you will see that there are three lights on the dais in front of me, a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Uh, the green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means you have one minute left and the red light means that your time has expired, uh, and we are strict about that. So having said that, uh, is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I've gotta read all of this.
If you can do it in five minutes.
And if I run, uh, councilman, uh, Corbin can explain. Okay. I don't blame the council.
Oh, excuse me, could you please state your name and address for the record? Sorry about that.
Has the time started yet?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I've asked you nine-six-seven songbird lane. I don't blame the council if its members shrug off my last call for Holland to become a constitutional sanctuary. It sounds extreme, I understand that, something a paranoid right-winger would think of. Not only that, I understand that as municipal leaders, it's natural to evaluate such a move through this, through city interests rather than individual interests. Ask yourselves, when was it that declaring an unequivocal allegiance to the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights, rather than submission to a growing government power of federal and state bureaucracies with their abuses, became a radical right-wing value? The more important question should be which takes precedent, which takes primacy, the city as a whole, or the enumerated, not evolving liberties and immunities of, for individual citizens? I'm becoming ever more alarmed at our nation's accelerating devolvement into a people comfortable with any, which, with what any knowledgeable person would recognize as an intensifying authoritarianism. A people without ultimate absolutes drifting from one exploited crisis to another, looking for governments, large and small, to assume the throne as their absolute so that temporal authorities can claim to fix their perceived woes. In the process, the Marxist ideal of collectivist solutions continues to snake ever closer to reality as individual, as the individual diminishes. Last week, this is what brought me to this, a very close friend of mine who is a physician and researcher with an M.D. in internal medicine, a Ph.D. in immunology with specialties in hematology and oncology, received a letter sent to all physicians certified under the American Board of Internal Medicine. The letter threatened their medical licenses for any physician who might, in their words, quote, "provide misinformation about COVID vaccines," unquote, to their patients. My question is, that threat may have been sent to practitioners in Holland. Is your physician able to be honest with you now? Of course, there is President Biden's latest effort to nationalize our self-care decisions also. The mantra on the left is my body, my choice. COVID, not so much. Prior to two thousand and twenty, healthcare labored under extensive sacrosanct federally enforced law that protected the privacy of all citizens for their self-determination in healthcare. Now, we must add extensive power grabs. And then the faux-science of human-caused climate change, the latest local example being the letter from our own strategic development team. The SDT seems to have set aside all the climate science, this packet that I can just download, except for what comes out of the Climate Gate stained ICP, IPCC machine. I wonder how many members have actually objectively studied anything outside the party line? How long will it be until climate activists' patience wear thin, quote-unquote? And they call for the rest of us taxpayers to fund grants and incentives to impose green mandates on private businesses and homes? These are just two of the most important vehicles being used to pressure the council to become more vested in a government over free market. And the use of, to use President Biden's threat, our patience wearing thin, a revulsion of free people not toeing the line. Will the council fall into line or wait until it's too late? Will it demand liberty over creeping tyranny? The Fifth Amendment, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. The Ninth Amendment, the enumeration of the constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
I was almost gonna say, you could do it for me, but that's okay. Anne Henriksen-Zeland. I just want to bring you up to speed about Family Central opening. It was quite a success. Um, I wasn't able to be there, but I happened to go a couple days before and they let me in and showed me around a little bit. The manager showed me something on his phone that somebody had sent them and he was doing this. He didn't actually let me read it, but it was, uh, an organized protest against the store opening. And it was done, I believe, by Joe Spalding, if I may call his name. I called Jeff Sorensen about the issue and I asked him, did he know about this protest? And he said, no, he said, yes, he did know about it, but he wasn't part of it. And then he and I had about a forty-five minute conversation that, um, I believe the heart of this man, as much as he stands for what he stands for, he also believes what he stands for, freedom for another group. And I applaud him for that. He met with Joe that afternoon and as it turned out that the protest only was minimal and, uh, it was, um, civil. There was only one person that was yelling, um, but the rest were showing their signs and that was about it. I had also called the Episcopal Church and the Hope Church about this protest, being that they are churches believing in God. Is this what they want to represent their ordinance? Is this the kind of behavior that they want exhibited? And, um, so I applaud them also. They didn't get back to me, but I called them and thanked them for whatever they did is you have a right to protest, you have a right to stand on what you believe in. That's, we're Americans. But the day that it comes that you're gonna shut down someone else. And I did wanna say that, um, in two thousand and nineteen, when I'm on the Lake Shore opened up, Mayor Box, I believe you attended the open house. And so did the sitting mayor, it was Nathan at the time. Mayor DeBoer and her husband also attended to, I believe, to show that this is what the kind of community we are. And, um, I, I wanna say that to this council, that this is what, what we stand for. I received a letter that says, does America hate God? And I wanna reiterate it, does Holland hate God? I want you to think that through, where are we going with this? In two thousand and six, in Des Moines, Iowa, the God-hating Americans United for Separation of Church and State. This is what many churches hold on to in not getting involved in issues. Won a lawsuit when a federal judge ordered a Bible-based prison program out of the Newton Correction Facility and ordered the Bible group to repay the state of Iowa one point five three million dollars. Two thousand and fifteen, shortly after the Islamic State terrorists burned a man alive on worldwide TV, Barack Obama goes to the National Prayer Breakfast to tell the assembled faithful, it's the same as the Christians during the crusades. Two thousand and twenty, a delegate, A.J. Durante, at the Democratic National Convention leaves out "under God" from the pledge of allegiance. Two thousand and twenty-one, the ACLU and other liberal atheist groups won a lawsuit to force the Pentagon to start removing crosses formerly, formerly used as grave markers in the nationals, the nation's military cemeteries. So I'm asking you, how far will this go in Holland? Is it possible? Yeah, it is. It's at our door. I listened to a lecture at Hope College. Yeah. Similar. Does Holland hate God?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Yes, Mr. Trithui.
There's the next person's, come on. Let the record show that, uh, council member Byrd joined us at six oh seven, please.
Thank you, Mike. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Mika Weiss, six D, East Twenty-first Street, Holland, Michigan. Uh, and I'm here with Petal Holland. Um, and I'm here tonight because I wanted to express our appreciation for your vote last year, your approval of the Tenth Street bike lane. Last year was a really challenging year and it was a really difficult time to have any kind of challenging conversation. Change is difficult. It was a hard year to discuss that. But you rose to the occasion and, uh, now that the facility is open and being used on a daily basis, we're really grateful, um, for the decision that you made there. And I wanted to also make sure that, um, you're aware of our appreciation for the good work that your staff has done in this process. So you've seen, you know, the, the bike lane being built, the street being built, um, in a difficult year to get things done, but I don't know if you're aware of how quickly and graciously, uh, your transportation and police departments responded when there was some confusion, um, when the facility first opened. Uh, they worked really hard right away to make sure that the facility would be open for the safe use and enjoyment of the entire community, but they did it in a way that was really kind and was really gracious. And, um, we appreciate that and also just wanna make sure, uh, you're aware of the great work that they're doing there. So a couple weeks ago, I was on Talk of the Town and one of the things, one of the callers that called in talked about, um, they were, they were saying that they had really wanted to ride their bike a lot more, uh, to get around town. So they called in and they were saying, I tried to ride my bike a couple times, it's worth, uh, something that I really wanna be able to do and, you know, I, uh, it just felt really dicey. Are there plans for more bike infrastructure coming in Holland? And, uh, he said, well, we've got something great that just happened on Tenth Street and we hope so. So I'll leave that with you, with that, we hope so. Um, and then just one other FYI, um, right now Petal Holland is doing our annual bike counts. We do these every fall. Um, and I think you've probably only heard about them in the context of the whole Tenth Street conversation, but this is something that we do every year so that we have hard numbers, kind of to understand what the movement patterns are, what the usage is in bikes and around the city. So this week, we're at the River Avenue Bridge and then we also have a couple sites up on the north side and then, uh, next week, we're planning to count out on South Shore Drive and on Seventeenth Street. So just wanted to make you aware of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Story, three forty-four West Thirty-fifth Street in the Allegan County portion of Holland. And I thought I'd give you a brief update on, uh, the work that's going on in our county. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, about five items I'd like to share with you. Uh, the past, uh, three weeks, we've been, uh, focusing on school mask requirements. Um, and we've had numerous, uh, public participation, uh, probably perhaps taking some cues from people who appear before you. And, uh, we have, uh, asked that the resolution or the order that was issued by our health officer be revised to allow that to be, decision to be made by school districts rather than a county-wide ordinance. Uh, however, she has declined and so we're gonna have to move on. We've also formed a broadband action group. Uh, pleased that the Board of Public Works has dedicated one of their staff members to participate in that group so that we can hopefully get high-speed fiber to, uh, the thirty-four percent of our county residents' areas that do not have access, uh, to, to fiber. The entire, uh, COVID experience has awakened, I think, the population of our county to the need for that to, uh, participate fully in the economic life of the world and also for education and speaking of health, uh, health purposes. Uh, we are moving along, uh, at this point, uh, taking information from existing providers before, uh, delving into how we can help those providers expand into the county. And speaking of expansion, on Friday, um, the Gun Lake Tribe of, uh, Potawatomi Indians will, uh, open the, do a ribbon-cutting ceremony to open their one hundred million dollar expansion of their casino in, in, uh, Wayland Township. And that's the first of, uh, another expansion that's on the road. Um, the, the tribe has advised that they intend to build a major hotel there. Uh, some, the rumors are that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred million dollars and will be modeled after some of the successful operations in Las Vegas. Reapportionment, as you know, every ten years, um, the census, uh, release causes, um, county, state, and national lines to be drawn for representation. The Citizens Independent Redistricting Commission of Michigan has come up, come out with a few maps, uh, for our area. Kind of disappointed that, um, the maps for state representative districts divides Allegan County into four districts and the state senate districts, uh, divides the county into three state senate districts, kind of thus, uh, reducing, uh, some of our potential impact on future state decision-making. On the county side, um, the county reapportionment commission, uh, will have a second meeting next week, uh, Tuesday at nine o'clock, uh, to start drawing, first of all, deciding how large a board of commissioners we will have for the next ten years. Currently, we have seven. Previous decade, there was eleven members. And also, again, where, uh, the districts are drawn, uh, for those, for those areas. And finally, I would be, uh, I would be a very poor representative of our county if I did not advise that you still have four days to visit one of the nation's largest county fairs. The Allegan County Fair is underway and, uh, ends on Saturday. Uh, some two excellent entertainment, uh, options await for the remainder of the week. And, uh, for those of you who are for more raucous entertainment, it concludes, uh, with the demolition derby on Saturday. Thank you. And if I am at your direction, Mayor Box, I'd be happy to answer any questions of any topics that have popped up.
Thank, great, thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Uh, the next item on our agenda, special order of, or excuse me, skipped over one on my list here, special presentations and recognitions from the mayor, our council, and city manager. And I do have a proclamation, uh, this evening in regard to the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Lake Shore Ethnic Diversity Alliance. Uh, and we have Gloria Lara here, who's the director of, uh, of LITA. So welcome. Uh, and I would like to, uh, present the proclamation, uh, to LITA and I will read it at this moment. Uh, whereas, Lake Shore Ethnic Diversity Alliance was established in nineteen ninety-seven to work to dismantle barriers to ensure people of all ethnic backgrounds have equal access and opportunity. And whereas, since its inception, it has launched several important initiatives in the Ottawa and Allegan Counties, including Calling All Colors in nineteen ninety-nine, a program for middle school and high school students in which the students embark on learning about diversity, equity, and inclusion, learning to talk to kids about race in twenty fourteen, Spanish language classes in twenty fifteen, migrant mentoring and reading program in twenty fourteen, and community conversations in twenty twenty. And whereas, LITA, in conjunction with the Ottawa County and local community foundations, initiated the pledge, a call to action in dismantling racism. And whereas, LITA has grown in membership over the years and initiated the Summit on Race and Inclusion that welcomes statewide stakeholders to educate on race and inclusion in areas of community life, including education, business, healthcare, government, and education. And whereas, LITA continues to find ways to serve their community as a consultant in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas, we acknowledge the Lake Shore Ethnic Diversity Alliance for their twenty-five years of dedication, faithful commitment, and contributions to improving the quality of life in our community. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, recognize the positive impact Lake Shore Ethnic Diversity Alliance has had on the City of Holland community, as well as its role in race and inclusion, and joins LITA as they celebrate their twenty-fifth anniversary. We invite the community to celebrate this important milestone on September sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, tomorrow night, at six P.M. at the Outdoor Discovery Center. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, this fifteenth day of September two thousand and twenty-one, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland. So congratulations Gloria, congratulations to LITA. Um, as I was reading through this, again, as my, my children went through Calling All Colors, I've been involved in multiple, uh, of the programs as well as, including community conversations with you last year. Uh, LITA does great work and is a great partner in this community, so thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda, uh, special order of the day, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one CDBG Program Year. Uh, Mr. Van Beek.
You know, I just feel like saying this. Counsel often says that I talk a lot and I'm the one that speaks most. And recently, I think, Mr. Cornelis has been in front I'm the one that speaks most. And recently, I think, Mr. Cornelis has been in front of you and been making more presentations, but I know you like listening to him more than you like listening to me.
I've heard you get frequent flyer miles.
Frequent flyer miles. We'll give you an extra donut tomorrow, Mark. So he's gonna be making a presentation on the CAPER, uh, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And it's about all the great programming that we do with the CDBG funds. So Mark, please take it away, even though I ribbed you a little bit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, this is an annual occurrence that I come for this specific purpose to, uh, ask for your approval, uh, of the, the, the CAPER, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report relative to the Community Development Block Grant Program. Um, the report itself is not a terribly lengthy report. If you had a chance to look at it, it's just 15, 16 pages and then a couple of pages of financial information. Uh, but it details the activities that have been carried out over the past year and the expenditures from the past year. And, uh, the HUD, the CDBG year coincides with the city's fiscal year. So it covers July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of 2021. So what's before you is, um, a list of the expenditures, uh, by category, uh, from the past year. Um, a pretty typical year in a lot of respects. Uh, the city has operated the home repair program. So I'll, I'll back up for just a second. We spent $444,911 of general CDBG funds. And then the second screen after this will, uh, account for the additional funds that we spent, um, on the COVID supplemental funding. But of our general funds, $444,911, um, most of that or a good portion of that devoted to very common programs, our home repair program, which the city has operated for more years than I know, but many, 2025, probably perhaps 30. Um, and I'll give a little bit more data about that specific program in a minute. Uh, the public improvement program, which, um, all, all of those dollars that are mentioned there, 163,926, were spent on the completing the 30th Street, 30th Plasmin Ottawa Project, the sidewalk project. Uh, we traditionally devote some of our funds, but we're limited to 15% for public services. And that $24,999 went to two different sub grants, one to Community Action House and one to Good Samaritan Ministries specifically for, um, serving persons experiencing homelessness. We also traditionally support, uh, the local work of the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan to the tune of $10,000 a year. That comes out of our admin pot. Um, so that with, uh, the amount of, the, the cost for our just general program administration amounted to 13% of the total and we're, we're prohibited from spending more than 20% of our total on that, on those categories. So just a little bit of data on the COVID funding, um, our allocation in two different allotments totaled $390,032. Uh, we've spent, or our partners have spent along with our administrative funds, we spent 210, 134 of that so far. Um, 97% of that has gone for direct services and 3% has gone towards administrative costs. So we're about 56%. Uh, we're ahead of most communities in our spending on that program. So, um, and as we all know that, uh, the, that issue is not behind us and the costs, um, experienced by those agencies, our partner agencies, uh, continues to be, to be a challenge. So back to our general program, um, I'll just mention a couple of highlights. Our home repair program assisted 37 homeowners in the past year. Uh, the average project cost, um, is, was 8,340, fairly typical. Uh, the CD portion of that, um, usually or the average runs around 63% of that cost with the homeowners contributing, um, on average 37%. And then just a little bit of information on the types of households that we are assisting. Um, all 37 of those households qualified as low income. Um, three of the, of the 37 qualified as extremely low income, which equates to incomes below 30% of the area median. Uh, 15 of the 37 qualified as very low income according to HUD's guidelines. And that's, those are incomes below 30, uh, between 30 and 50% of the area median. And then the remaining households, uh, fell in that next category of 50 to 80% of area median. 22 of the households assisted were, um, female headed households and 13 were elderly headed households. And then over on the right, you can see we're doing quite a few roof repairs and replacements, a good number of sewer and water line replacements, a decent amount of furnace work, and then a smattering of other, you know, plumbing, plumbing repairs, a variety of other things. All of the repairs that we assist with are considered, um, essential in some way or another. They're not cosmetic. They're gonna be something having to do with habitability and safety. Another area of accomplishment at the bottom is, as I already mentioned, the completion of the 30th Street sidewalk project, uh, which completed, I forget Brian, oh, Brian's gone. Um, when did that complete? I don't know. In the summer, early summer?
Yeah.
Another, uh, key accomplishment, um, I'll retract the word successful operation because we have nothing to do with the operation. We just provide some financial support for two programs, um, serving persons experiencing homelessness through Community Action House and Good Samaritan Ministries. 195 persons were served, uh, collectively between those two programs, those two agencies. And then finally, uh, we continue our support for the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan. Just a few numbers there. They provided 28 hours of education and outreach in the, in the immediate Holland area. They completed four, or they began four new case investigations and, um, completed seven fair housing tests. And one of the requirements that HUD places on approving the CAPER or preparing and approving the CAPER annually is, um, making sure that we're soliciting public comment. So we did, uh, publish and request public comment and the document's been available for two weeks. Uh, we have not received any public comment to date, but we will have a public hearing, um, prior to you entertaining, uh, approval of the report. That's the extent of my presentation. So I'm open to any questions.
Yes, Mr. Chithui.
Mark, you're sitting here listening to you and, and kicking myself in the head for not thinking of this sooner. With all these home repairs that you're doing, uh, is it possible to partner with our fire department to make sure that every one of these houses that these repairs go into get fire dete- or smoke detectors in them?
Uh, it's a great question. I will happily pursue that. Yeah.
To look into. They're, they're looking, they, they get some, they're looking to place them. Unfortunately, in some of these situations, that's probably the last thing that people are thinking about. So if we could offer them, and typically they're free of charge. So that would be the perfect time to say, you know, let's upgrade your smoke.
Yep. We meet, I meet monthly with, uh, the fire marshal. So that's something I can definitely look into and pursue. And yeah, if it's some additional expense that the city can incur, uh, yeah, we, we can look at some options there.
I think it'd be a great safety factor there. Great report. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Scott, and then Dave, and then Nikki, and then Lynn.
So I, um, the city of Grand Rapids this morning, I heard NPR announced some $895,000 they set aside for, um, not homelessness, but, uh,
Affordable.
Affordable housing. There you go. I lost the term there. Affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you enlighten me, do you know maybe where those, people are asking and saying, well, why aren't we spending more money in this? And I, I just noticed that in your comments, you mentioned that you have limitations on how much you can spend, a percentage of what we receive in CB, CBGT, CBG.
CBGB.
CBG funds. A lot of words here. Um, so is, is there maybe they get more, larger city, larger area? And is that possibly that's where they're getting those kind of dollars from?
Yep. They definitely receive a much larger allocation than we do, probably pushing 2 million, whereas ours is around 300,000. Um, and they, I had a conversation or an email conversation with, with Keith and Ryan earlier in this week about a, a different block of funds that the city does not currently receive. And those are home funds also from the sources HUD. Um, and those funds are much, are designed to be spent on affordable housing, whether it's homeownership or rental. So that's my, that's my first guess. I don't know if you were gonna contribute to that, Keith, but.
No, there's that. There's, there's a lot of different pots of money that are being talked about or identified and, and especially with our connection with, with Mark, but also with Ryan. We're kind of monitoring some of that to see if it's something that we, um, have historically gotten, if there's a rationale why we haven't historically gotten some of these. I know Mark did some investigation on those home funds that he talked about. Um, and some of the others, I'll, I'll say there's some communities that are making some decisions to move forward with spending funds on some things that there's a lot of other, um, places that are, um, wondering if they're making some of those decisions a little bit too early as it relates to the interim final guidelines of the, um, ARPA money. And that's all I'll say about that.
Yeah. I, I guess I just wanted to see if you knew anything, any, any information about where those funds might be coming from because, you know, people start comparing communities and start saying, well, why aren't we doing the same? You know, nearly a million dollars versus what, 85,000 or something like that? I think in total, I was kind of writing some numbers down, but, but, uh, there's a big difference in how much we receive in these different kind of grant programs. I just want to make sure it's publicly known. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't have direct knowledge on that specific, that news item that you're referencing, but.
Thank you.
Dave, and then Nikki, and then Lynn. I think that's the way I had it.
Yeah. Save the best for last. That's all I'm gonna do.
Yeah, Mark, thank you for this report. It's, uh, very easy to understand and concise. Um, I know, having watched this over a number of years, um, the amount of money that's available is pretty fluid from year to year as circumstances change. Um, so some years we weren't sure if we were getting any at all or what the amount was gonna be. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you have a sense of the sustainability of these funds and, um, any sense that it'll change dramatically or just hard to tell?
Yeah. My sense from looking at the last 15 years or so is that there have been some ups and downs, but the trajectory has been mostly flat. It did go up, well, it was a, it was similar to the COVID allo- the supplemental COVID allocation during the recession, 2009, 2010, somewhere in that range, there was a big, uh, spike in additional funds. But other than those, um, we've gotten somewhere in the 280 to 340,000 dollar range for probably the last 12, 15 years. So that would be my, my best expectation that that continues. I don't, I don't hear anything about it going away or any dramatic changes. Um, the program has had very few changes since it was adopted in, uh, the mid eighties. Um, a lot of the, the resources that I go to every now and then for reference, some of these are documents that go back to the eighties or at least the early nineties. So, uh, the program has been pretty static in most respects. Uh, that doesn't mean the funding will be static, but that's the best I can, I can guess.
Well, let's hope the powers that be can't just leave it alone. Um, just to editorialize a bit, um, way back when, uh, we had items in our budget, uh, I think it was called the social services line items or budget or something where, as a city, we allotted funds to competing agencies within the city to address social issues and so forth. And because due to a number of different circumstances, um, that got phased out. So this, even though it isn't as comprehensive, I think, as that program was or, or those givings where it's these funds still address some pretty significant needs in the city that, uh, we might be hard pressed to otherwise find, um, resources for, without relying completely on the private sector. So, thank you very much.
I would, I would just add to that, that the, the funding that we're providing to the Neighborhood Connector organizations is in part kind of, I think, replacing some of those social service funds that used to be around, uh, 10, 10 or so years ago.
Nikki?
Yes, and some of it was taken by Dave. So thank you. I can shorten what I have to say. Um, so it's nice that we have direct, um, help with the people and we do so much indirect. But one of my favorite lines in your report is, other than the amount spent on planning and administration, 100% of funds expended resulted in direct benefits to low and moderate income houses, households and areas. And I, that's a great, uh, statistic. You know, that, that so much was, you know, you didn't spend it all on administration. So.
That speaks to the programs that we choose to operate. Other cities or other municipalities might run programs where they're, they're allowed to serve, for instance, youth or maybe a food, some sort of assistance program where the, the recipients don't have to be under 80% of area median. So that's where HUD does allow, or CDBG does allow a bit of a, of a, of a, some flexibility there. But the ones that we operate were, were, for instance, the home repair program, we would deny a household that applies that would be over that 80%. So that's the explanation for that.
Lynn?
Yeah. Um, I was gonna, I was remembering that social service funding also. Do you remember when we used to sit in a room?
I was an applicant many years.
What was the name, what was his name, the community and neighborhood services guy that used to do that big spreadsheet?
Bruce Boss?
Bruce Boss. He used to do this, we used to sit in a room and there were dozens of us in a room.
Yep.
That would, and he would do this very complicated spreadsheet that would calculate all the, the, um, the priorities. And it was, it was really great. And I think what the reason I'm bringing it up is because even though that funding isn't available at that level, the city always looks for a way to collaborate with the community. And this is just a really great example that even the funding is, is significantly smaller, we find ways to make really big differences in the community. And I would draw your attention to page 10 and beyond on that, right, on the report that Mark is submitting to HUD, um, because it, it talks a lot about how, um, the city collaborates to address the needs of people experiencing homelessness. And which, you know, because that's my day job, it's really important to have good partners like the city. And, um, just really great, um, examples of how that collaboration makes a difference. So I just really appreciate that. And also the funding that you're, that the, um, the funding, not CDBG funding, but the other, um, CV funding, the COVID funding, really filled a gap for those organizations. Uh, Resilience, Community Action House and Good Sam in particular, really filled a gap that wasn't being addressed by, by the funding that they received for COVID, um, the COVID funding. So that was, that was perfect.
Good to hear.
Quincy?
So regarding the home repair projects, how, how does that process work for someone to be a candidate for that? And, and I guess, how do we get that information out? How do people find out about that as well?
We, we want to get the information out. Our numbers are, I, I noted 37. Our goal was 40. Um, and as we move into this current fiscal year, we're a little bit slow, not, not dramatically slow. So we want to get the word out too. Um, I mean, there's pretty good, clear information on the website. There's an application that can be filled out and submitted. It's pretty simple. Once an application is submitted, then there's, we need to see some income information and then the homeowner needs to get three quotes. So I'm kind of going through the process in a nutshell, but it's not difficult. Um, and what I didn't note in the report is our level of assistance. So for those lowest income households, the city, the CDBG funds contribute 90% of the total cost, which is substantial. Uh, for that next tier up, 30 to 50% of the area median, we're contributing 75%, a 75, 25 split. And then for that highest band, 50 to 80, uh, we're contributing 50% of the project. So, um, it's a pretty decent level of financial support, um, as few barriers as possible. But yeah, getting the word out to homeowners that are in that, in those lower income bands is, is the trick. So we would appreciate any, any help. We, we communicate regularly with the Neighborhood Connector organizations. We, we promote it however we, you know, all the ways that we think makes sense, but.
Okay.
There's always room for more.
Yeah. I believe Mr. Van Beek has something to add to this.
Yeah, I think all of those things are true. And Mark, maybe you can confirm for me and, and, and then see if I have this right too for the council and for the public. You know, third floor with doing code enforcement and inspections and all those types of things really tends to be one of our, we're our own biggest, um, you know, advisor or, um, when you, referral source. That's the word I was looking for. Because quite often Quincy, we're aware of a situation out there where we might have a code complaint or something like that. Um, and then we connect them with this program and connect them with Mark and then help walk someone that might be in a difficult situation with a home repair, um, which is great, right? Because, and which is why it makes sense where all of that is located on third floor.
That's good to know. I did not know when, um, there's code violations that you also couple this with that. So that's, is that what you're saying? you also couple this with that. So that's, is that what you're saying?
Yes, certain types of code violations, obviously.
Right.
You know, we're long weeds or some of those types of things. But there's definitely been instances, right, where it's like, hey, they're, we're aware that there's a problem. And then, you know, we'll, we'll engage people where they're at. And if it's something that fits into this program, then we do that warm transfer and we take a look at that opportunity.
That's impressive. I didn't know that.
And it also happens when we do a street reconstruction and a lot of households need to replace their sewer or water lines, then we can step in with these funds to, to contribute to that.
Raul?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. The, so I'm serving on on council for the last almost four years now. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Neighborhood Improvement Committee. And I think just a couple of things that I want to express my appreciation for. One, one being, I think as we've been kind of looking at these numbers, we've been looking at CDBG and we have eyes on that a lot more frequent than the rest of council. But to see kind of comparisons with other communities, you know, similar to ours in size and just the things that we're able to accomplish, the things that we're able to, the programs that we're able to craft and and facilitate, I think, I mean, again, are in line with a lot of things and the ways that we do city business. Where I think we extend our dollars and we, we kind of know the right things to do with the resources that we have. But and then the second thing, which I think is, is a testament to you, you know, when, when Sue exited out, there was a lot of history, a lot of knowledge that went with that and, but to have had you now in this position, I think says a lot about you and to be able to handle this as you have over these particular, you know, this particular season that we've been in, in addition to that CV funding that we, that we have and to extend those dollars and make those work for us and for the city. Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council at this point? Thank you, Mark. And echoing all of those, that's the, kind of the honor of being the, the last one to go is you guys all stole my thunder, which I appreciate. Thank you very much for that. So, thanks, Mark. Now we need to open a public hearing in regard to this matter. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to council in regard to this particular item? And we do have the five minute limit in, for these comments as well. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one CDBG program year?
Will we approve the report?
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnsors. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Corbin? Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Kathy. Next item, downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on final assessment for October sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Council. I think Matt is going to be getting up over my shoulder here momentarily. I'll give a little bit of context and he'll probably kick me later because he says that's what I was going to say, Keith, but reminder, this is the second in a three-step process. Last time, we made a presentation to you, we had Kara and Amy here that talked about the changes that were made last year where we either froze or we reduced these assessments and the process that the PSD and the DDA went through in evaluating these. So tonight is the resolution of necessity, which also goes with a public hearing and then scheduling that. So at the public hearing, Kara and Amy will be back to answer any other final questions that you might have. And then there's one more public hearing and then proposed adoption that evening. And again, there's three, there's three of these, back to back to back. And Matt, what else, what else do you want to say?
That was about all I had to say. So thank you, Keith. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions from council members? Scott, Dave, Lynn, Nikki? Quincy, Raul, Mike, no. All right. Then I will open the public hearing in regard to the downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Is there anyone who would like to address council in regard to this matter? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And we do again, limit this to five minutes.
I hope it doesn't take five minutes, but I'm Matt Klaus, forty-five East Eighth Street. I was just going to say, I think all the assessments need to be frozen or reduced again simply because this year, we still continued the government restrictions and shutdowns. We were open, I think, not at all for three months. And then at twenty-five percent capacity, I think through May. So our revenues were obviously cut, but city revenues didn't go down at all. My property taxes didn't go down at all. And the best of my knowledge, the city did receive COVID funding. I don't know where that went to or if that can go to these types of things. Because obviously, parking and snowmelt are a necessity. I jog on sidewalks every day and they're fantastic, especially in the winter. That was mostly my remarks, just, it's been an incredibly challenging year and a lot of the challenges have been brought on by government, even the, you know, hiring situation. So we have all these uncertainties and trying to find supply, trying to find employees. And I just don't think it's the time to up taxes again. Just, I would leave it at the same level or reduce them again. But as far as how you make up the difference, I think you guys have the power to do that. And that is all.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And what is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Motion to adopt the resolution of necessity for the annual parking operations and maintenance assessment. Resolution scheduling a public hearing for October sixth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. In these council chambers, to consider the final roll and instruct the city clerk to publish and mail required notices.
Great. Thank you for that very detailed motion. Appreciate that. Mr. Trithuie, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. Any discussion? Seeing, yes, Mr. Trithuie?
Just so it's not understood that we don't listen and hear, we definitely heard you and are listening. But this recommendation came to us from the DDA, the PSD and the groups down there. Fully understanding what you went through, not being there ourselves, but we have heard many, many stories and can sympathize as much as, as we can. But in this particular case, this was a board that came with this recommendation. So that's probably the line that's going to follow here. But thank you very much for coming.
Mr. Byrd?
I, I guess, for this, I seen we got one email and I wasn't able to read it all. But how many emails or how many communications have we had in opposition of this?
Mr. Van Beek?
So I'm aware of one email and I've, I, I gave a pretty thorough response to that email that you all will have a chance to read. And then the gentleman that came tonight. Outside of that, my understanding is, in addition to the unanimous support by the PSD and the DDA boards, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not personally familiar of, of others and so I think, and, and recall what we did and what I outlined in an email that, that if you'll have time to go back and read that. Really what the PSD and the DDA is recommending is going back to the levels that were collected back in two thousand nineteen. And in absence of doing that, there was kind of fun, I, I think, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, because you are there at those meetings. And partly, you know, the title of this is public hearing of necessity. These are standalone funds and I think all of you realize, I understand that the public doesn't always understand this, but these assessments are supporting things that are outside of the general fund and in the absence of these funds being raised, the things that they support would then at some point need to not continue to happen. So I think that's where totally understand different opinions and those types of things. I think that's, you know, one of the main reasons why those boards have taken a look at this and decided to go back and make the recommendation that they've, they've made to you.
Yeah, and I'll just jump in a little bit. The, the parking board made this recommendation to the PSD, that's kind of the process. This particular one was reduced by five percent last year and be, is being increased three percent from that reduction. So it's actually still, this particular one is still reduced. The principal shopping district was reduced by ten percent last year. That would go back, the recommendation is to go back to that normal level. And then snowmelt was frozen last year and that is recommended to be the standard three percent increase. We've done a three percent increase in snowmelt for the last several years. So just, they, they all kind of vary a little bit. But this particular one was reduced five percent and is going to be increased or recommended to be increased by three percent. Keith is correct. I had several conversations with Amy in particular today. And we are only aware of the public comment today and then the, the email that you all received, I believe, this afternoon.
So, so what I'm
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
So what I'm hearing, the individuals or the businesses paying into this are directly the beneficiaries of this as well?
Absolutely. All right. Any other comments?
Well, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trithuie?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, downtown principal shopping district assessment. Adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual principal shopping district assessment and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on final assessment for October sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Back to you, Mr. Van Beek.
I think probably there's nothing really more for us to give you if, by way of context or anything, Matt, if you want to say anything, but otherwise there, I think it's best to take these three individually. But I think we've probably given you the information or happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Wanted to make sure I gave you that opportunity. I will now open a public hearing in regard to this particular item. Is there anyone who would like to address council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Motion to support item seven C as presented on the agenda.
Moved by Corbin. Is there support? Support by Trithuie, loud and clear. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, it's just a shorter way to present it.
But it's not as precise.
Any other discussion on this item? Yeah, Quincy?
And this one goes back to the ten percent, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing, yeah, Mike.
This goes back to the ten percent, but it's still from the nineteen level. Okay. It's not like we're adding ten percent out of last year.
Ri- right. So they, they dropped it, after nineteen, they dropped it ten percent. And then adding the ten percent. Got it.
All right. Anyone else? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnsors?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item D, downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment. Adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing for, on final assessment for October sixth, two thousand twenty-one. And yes, I am passing it to you again, Mr. Van Beek, just in case.
And I'll just, I appreciate that. And I will say, unless there's any questions that anyone from council has, I think we've laid this out.
Any questions?
This is at three percent, correct?
Yeah, this would be
It was frozen
It was frozen.
Last year.
Correct.
And then we're adding the three percent, which is incremental increases that we have done over the course of time.
Virtually for as long as we've had snowmelt, yes, is my understanding. But for the last, for as many years as we can remember, we've increased it by this percentage.
Okay.
Yes, Raul?
And, and these recommendations came with a unanimous vote from the boards?
So that's a great question to ask Amy because snowmelt is a little bit different on how that recommendation comes to you. So I would, I would recommend that should you adopt the hearing of necessity, that snowmelt is important. You ask Ms. Sasamoto that question on October sixth. I will not be here on that day, but she's more than qualified to answer that.
Any other questions? I will now open the public hearing in regard to the downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment. Is there anyone who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask once again, what is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Motion to accept item seven D, downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment. Adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment and to adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on final assessment for October sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin.
I proudly support that.
It's amazing that we can have fun with that type of a thing. Yes, yes. Is there any discussion on that incredibly precise motion? Yes, Mr. Hookstra?
I think I understand what you just said. I'm not going to dispute the recommendation at all. I know that we've asked questions in the past about the validity of, and the amount, I guess, of the, of the assessments. I know that we use these payments to pay for the operation and maintenance of the system. We also use the funds to pay off certain bonds and so forth, as I understand it. Which is very good. I would just like to make a recommendation, or a suggestion, rather, for next year when we get to this point. It would be interesting for me to know when we're being asked to pass a resolution that says that this is necessary, to actually have a bit more of a breakdown of what the funding levels are and if they're, if they're in here, I missed it, I apologize. And you can disregard what I'm saying right now. But what those levels of funding are, what the, what our expenditures were for that, where we are in, in relation to bond payoff. In other words, the relationship between what the income is from these assessments is versus the obligation the needed expenditures. So that we, so that I, and I won't put any of this on anyone else, so that I have a level of confidence that we're not just saying we're going to increase it three percent every year because for me, that would be a convenient way to do it. So I don't have to figure a lot of stuff out, but and there's probably very good logic involved in that, but it would be helpful for me to have a, a greater level of confidence that that would be the case if we have those numbers next year.
Yeah, I, I wrote myself a note. I think that's a fair request and we can come back. That, there, there is a snowmelt group that includes Amy, Brian White, that they do evaluate the costs of the system and what the assessment goes to, but there's no reason we can't bring that a little more detailed information back to you.
Yeah, I didn't want to insinuate that. People weren't doing their jobs. It would just be helpful for me and I think for everyone else who, especially those who are being assessed these amounts of money that keep going up, that there's actual logic to those assessments. So, thank you very much.
And Dave, thank you for that. And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think especially last year when the evaluation, they spent a lot more time saying, okay, what can we, and they looked at, at the annual budgets and expenditures and incomes and, you know, balances that they had there. They did the, and when I say they at that point, it's not staff, it's really working with those groups that make the determinations and recommendations to you. They did a significant amount of work exactly in that area that you're talking about. So I think that's relatively easy because we'll just move forward the information that they're making that those recommendations are determin, determinations based upon, to all of you.
That'd be helpful.
Any other discussion on the motion?
No, I just think it's good that we're unfreezing the snowmelt.
I hesitate to ask. Any other discussion? All right, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin? Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Next item on our agenda, item number nine, Written Petitions and Communications. In addition to receiving public comment in person at our meetings, we also have an email address that we encourage public members of the public to use when they want to send messages or information to counsel. That is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Counsel members read those in the interim between the meetings, and then we accept those into the record at our regular meetings. We do not read them out loud at the at the meetings, but we do read them to ourselves. And then what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the written petitions and communications?
Motion to accept his information.
Great, thank you, Mr. Trithui. Is there support? Support by Byrd, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Adopt a Resolution Approving Brew Merchant Holland Oktoberfest for September twenty-five, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know that we always put these items on regular agenda instead of consent agenda. This is a relatively administratively straightforward manner. I will highlight though for you that this is a process where first it comes to us and then it does need to go to the state. Probably just so you're aware, we have no idea what's going to happen with us, but the timeline and some of the paperwork that they may need to complete with the state, we're just aware that there may be some issues there. So even if you would choose to approve this, watch carefully. I won't necessarily assume that this event actually is going to happen. Our understanding, again, and has nothing to do with the city, but I under our understanding is that there it might be a little bit tight for them to to gain the state approval. So I've I felt it important to just let you know that. So it's not like if you would approve this, you'd go, hey, I showed up and it didn't happen. So I'm sure that should you approve this and the state approves this, I'm sure they will be advertising this if it moves forward. Otherwise, yeah, we would recommend adopting the resolution as outlined.
Great. Any questions in that regard? What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Will we approve?
Moved by Hookstra is their support. Support by Byrd, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yep.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithui?
No.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Next item six twelve E six point one gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Park and Recreation Sal Perez Scholarship Program, cash receipts, reporting dates August second through the twenty-ninth, seventy-five dollars. Parks and Recreation Lakeview Park, Robert Dykstra, one thousand dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great, thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the gifts?
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Moved by Trithui is their support.
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Twelve E six point two, West Michigan Airport Authority, Adopt Resolution Scheduling Public Hearing to Declare Surplus Property Parcel K. Mr. Van Beek?
I'm just going to hand it off to Matt because if I say anything else, he'll say that I said what he was going to say.
All right.
I would prefer that, actually, but no. Parcel K is an issue that was brought to us by the West Michigan Airport Authority. This is property that the authority feels is surplus. It's located on the southeast end of the airport. It's approximately eighteen acres. This property was purchased while it was actually owned by the City of Holland. It was purchased with FAA funds. The airport authority has gone through and secured a waiver from the FAA to declare this as surplus and sell it. It's our funds or excuse me, it's not our funds. It's our property. We are responsible for the sale, but any proceeds from that sale, we'll need to go back to the airport authority for airport operations or uses. A little bit more detailed of a site plan, you can get the a little bit better idea with where Lincoln Avenue is on that map. This property, because of its location on Sixty-four Street, as you all know, Sixty-four Street is booming with construction, and that whole end of town is becoming much more popular. As far as from a construction location, we would recommend and will recommend to you, should you adopt the or this resolution to declare this as surplus, again, remember, you're scheduling the public hearing to declare it later, you're not doing that tonight. We would recommend at that point, if you did go through and declare this property as surplus, that we list it with a realtor to bring back the highest value to the the city and then pass those funds to the airport authority.
Great, thanks, Matt. Any questions from counsel? Item that we reviewed at the study session last go round. So all right, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Will we approve the recommendation?
Moved by Hookstra is their support.
Support.
Support by Arnshorst, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithui?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you, Kathy. At seven fifteen PM, communications from the city manager.
Even at this early hour, I will try to make it quick. I appreciated counsel member Garcia in his prayer referencing a celebration that we were able to have and several several of you were able to attend. Thank you for that. Where we were we were able to gather as employees and have an employee appreciation luncheon, which we haven't been able to do for some time. We've discontinued that for a period of time. And we're able to gather at Windmill Island Garden underneath the pavilion with, you know, the winds blowing through there. And it was just fantastic to gather as a large group of employees that continue to provide fantastic services, in my opinion, and have done so, especially over these last periods of time in some pretty challenging environments. I don't waste an opportunity to brag on our people when I get a chance, and I wouldn't do that if I didn't think that they were worthy to brag about. So when I talk to other colleagues and other businesses where, you know, there have been some environments where it's been really hard and there've been a lot of problems with employees about trying to figure out all things, which I totally understand. Really, the one-two punch of primarily our employees of understanding what their purpose is, which is providing services to citizens, and really understanding that and holding on to that, but also our HR department just doing a fantastic job of communicating and working through individual instances with our employees. I just couldn't be more proud. So it was really great to be able to celebrate them yesterday. The other thing I know that all of you keep track of, I try to, and my Friday communications give you a variety of information and also kind of a heads up on things coming. And just a reminder where we'll have a joint closed session with the Board of Public Works next week for our study session. Then we'll have a fifth week off. I think those are you you always appreciate those fifth weeks off, and we've definitely been working you hard here recently. And then depending on actions of the Strategic Development Team, next Monday, we think there is a relatively good chance that we will have a study session early in October where the chair and vice chair of the Strategic Development Team will be coming back and presenting to you recommendations from the Strategic Development Team. So that date may change, but we I have kind of moved that on the schedule where if goes, I think as indications from the SDT membership goes, that probably will be the date where that will happen. And other than that, I'm available as always for any questions.
Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, thank you, Keith, appreciate it. Next item, appointments and communications from the mayor. I do not have anything this evening, so we'll move on to appointments, motions, communications from council members. And it's my understanding, Councilwoman Arnshorst has something, Mr. Trithui has something, and it looks like Mr. Corbin has something as well. So go ahead, Nicky.
This is longer than the agenda. Yes, and it's as many of you, as some of you are aware, November two is election day. And I would like to let you know, and maybe Clerk Grim can add or correct me, September twenty-eighth is National Voter Registration Day. And so there are a number of locations around the city. If you're not registered to vote, where you may register to vote, Herak Library is one from three to six PM. Western Theological Seminary during the noon hour, the community lunch hour from eleven to two, and our own little coffee spot, Le Manchello, Lemoncello down here on the corner from ten to one. And October eighteenth is the last day you can register to vote if you're not registered for the November two elections. So everyone get out there and vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicky. Scott. Or Scott, Mike? I've almost forgotten you already.
Yeah, thanks. Only six more meetings, but who's counting? Thank you for that. Number I do unfortunately, very uncharacteristically for me, I do have a number of items, so Keith, I'm sorry. First one being is I want to thank the community. I want to thank our sponsors, and I want to thank the participants. I understand the mayor said some nice things. Unfortunately, I didn't hear them, so I'm going to trust that you said nice things. The Labor Day Truck Parade was an overwhelming success. We had sixty sixty-seven trucks, I believe, every shape and size. Got everybody from Zeeland down here to the Civic Center. Went through about twenty-five hundred for sure, but probably close to three thousand or thirty-five hundred little cups of ice cream. One of the bigger turnouts I think I've seen in in the ten fifteen years that we've been doing this. So thanks to the community, thanks to the sponsors, thanks to the participants, all shape and sizes. And if you haven't caught a theme with me, I like big trucks and I like loud noises. So we have another opportunity for one of those parades, and that is coming October first. It's called the Fire Truck Parade, which has also been an annual event. That starts seven six thirty, seven o'clock, Friday, October first, going down Eighth Street with with a number of apparati apparati, get that? From around the community. And they all convene down at the Civic Center and have some demonstrations and a good time. So it's also a good time to remember National Fire Prevention Week. That is the culmination of that. Make sure you're checking your smoke detectors, make sure you're checking your fire alarms, practicing escape routes, things of that. It's just one more week to bring that to focus. So again, October first, six thirty, seven o'clock, line up down Eighth Street, come down and and look at all the the trucks that we have. This will probably be although it's been in in operation for a couple of months, a great unveiling for our new tower. I had a chance to take a look at that when my my youngest grandson was in. I was a hero. He got to sit in the seat. So come down and take a look at that that beautiful truck that we have that's going to be here for the next twenty years. I lost my place. Oh, tulip planting. It's another annual event that I have been doing. Tulip planting is coming up both October eight and October nine. There is signup sheets through volunteer tulip time. The Friday, the eighth is from ten to twelve and one to three. And the October the ninth is from eight to ten and ten to twelve. Seventy-five, eighty thousand tulips got to get in the ground, and they don't get there by themselves. And if we don't do it right, the deer think they're candy and take them up. So and then the biggest thing is next spring, you can go to Window on the Waterfront, Centennial Park, or wherever you happen to, and look at your handiwork. It's nature's way of saying thank you for putting these bulbs in there and the crowds that come down there and take a look at that. You can be very, very proud of of the work that you've done. And to throw a little guilt at the other members around this, it was counsel's idea to do this. So I expect to see a hundred percent participation for my last time to be out there planting tulips. So put it on your calendars, folks, sign up. And very last, but not not least, something, excuse me, something that was was, is, and has been very close and dear to my heart is the dog park. We have an open house to celebrate what we have, the beautiful park that Matt and Andy and council members and community put together. But that's going to happen on Friday, September twenty-fourth from three to six. It's an open house. Program is yet to be determined, but if you haven't been out there, please, please, please come and take a look, even if you don't have a dog, come and take a look. We've got a beautiful area there. Of course, it's up in the heights, so I'm a little bit prejudiced, but it's by the Monroe Valley Farm, very strategically placed so that the bathroom and what have you can be used during the winter with the sledding hills. The dog park, it's just a beautiful area if you haven't been out there. So come on, three to six, open house at the dog park, which is on Twenty-fourth Street between Waverly and Country Club on the north side of the road, just about exactly mid-block. Come out and take a look and see what's going on there.
Are are you interested in leading a hike on one of the trails?
I could possibly do that.
I believe there's a trail named Trithui Trail.
That is all.
That's great. Thanks, Mike. Scott?
Yeah, so real quick, I mean, as a council, we spoke a few months ago about having a report on how our committee structures are and that there was some work being done on those. And and as well as about the resolutions, right? As we well, not resolutions, proclamations, we had talked briefly about that. I was wondering if council would be interested in entertaining, you know, something on the study session to review what has been done or what what hasn't been done yet and just kind of get an update on what that process looks like.
Yeah, I could I can give you a quick update at this point, which is that was one of the things that was put on pause due to COVID.
Correct.
The the subcommittee that's made up of Counselor Raymond and Counselor Arnshorst and myself, I we met with the city manager one one time, maybe twice, to to start going over that information, just as that
The committee and commissioner?
The BCC BCC report.
The other part was too is like how we do proclamations and when do we do proclamations? I know we have some rules regarding resolutions, but, you know, the proclamations were kind of like mixed in there as part of that. So I I guess, you know, I don't really expect to have a full discussion this evening about it, but if we could get some kind of study session where that's on there and kind of debrief us a little bit of where you're at and where it's going.
Yep, that can happen. That can happen. I don't see any reason why that can't be would do show you where we've been on that, which is which I'll I'll give you a little preview, which is not very far due to COVID. So yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't want to I don't want to get your hopes up on that, yeah.
No, but there may be some discussion that might happen that would draw some ideas for all three of you to consider. So as long as the rest of the board members think that's reasonable for
It feels like it's been forgotten.
Yeah, I think we should have some. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, great. Quincy?
Mike, I wanted to publicly thank you for all your hard work for the truck parade. It was fun. Every time we I've been to the truck parade, it's been fun. This will be possibly your last year doing it, so thanks for all the hard work and putting it on. I know it's one of your big, big events for you, so actually glad to have you doing that. And then you made a comment about how you like big trucks and loud noises, right? How come you don't like fireworks? Thanks, really appreciate it.
Roll.
Yes, I only thought of this sharing this earlier today, but I want to kind of, I guess, share a little historical story narrative about tomorrow. So tomorrow being September sixteenth is known to Mexicans and Mexican, a lot of Mexican Americans as Dia de la Independencia or Grito de Dolores. And it marks the anniversary of Mex the Mexican War of Independence against Spain on September sixteenth, eighteen ten. Specifically, it commemorates a proclamation by Father Miguel Hidalgo Icostia on September sixteen, eighteen ten, in the village of Dolores near Guanajuato. Hidalgo's proclamation Hidalgo's proclamation called for an end to Spanish rule in Mexico, encouraged, encouraging rebellion and insurrection against the Spanish. And it was about ten years later, really, that uh, the independence of Mexico uh, was finally acknowledged by the Spanish Viceroy on September twenty seventh, eighteen twenty-one. Often, you know, Cinco de Mayo is confused as, as Mexico's independence, although there was a battle against the French, uh, where there was a victory in the, in the town of Puebla. But that's a different, a different story. And then since eighteen, the eighteen seventies, reenacting the proclamation has become a tradition. Every year, the Mexican president rings Hidalgo's bell, now kept at the National Palace in Mexico City and repeats Hidalgo's words at eleven PM on September fifteenth. And so that's coming up here soon. Um, and then on September sixteenth, there's going to be kind of some parades in the, in the city. It was in eighteen twenty-five that the Republic of Mexico officially declared September sixteenth as the National Independence Day. And why do I share this? Well, one, because it fits perfectly, because the night's the fifteenth, tomorrow's the sixteenth, right? So there's going to be some celebrating going, going on uh, with friends and family. The uh, but also, I am Mexican-American, right? My parents immigrated to this country as teenagers with their parents and siblings. Um, and as Jay has mentioned on several occasions, I think he, he, you know, talks about this often, that the demographics of the City of Holland are, are changing. They have been changing for some time and they will continue to change, right? And so this, this being part of my heritage, part of uh, what I bring to the City of Holland. I think being a proud Mexican-American myself, uh, this kind of instills in me a, a, a deep commitment uh, to serve, to serve others, to persevere against all odds, uh, to continue to be in, in, kind of in that, uh, also loving and hospitable and benevolent. Uh, and ultimately, for me personally, honoring God. You ask for the shirt off my back, and you better believe that I'll give you a second shirt, uh, rather than close myself uh, immediately after that. Um, and I think Holland is great. Yes, because, because I'm here, right? Because that's part of my story. But also because of all the other stories and heritages and, and people that make up this city. Every, each one of you sitting up here, those who have sat here before us, those who will sit uh, here in the future. But then the, the community at large, and so. Yeah, it's felt like taking the opportunity, right, because of tomorrow, uh, to share that, that I think it's that rich diversity. Which, what doesn't mean that as that grows and as it changes, that that we risk anything being lost as much as I think an opportunity for, for, you know, the things to be gained. And so, thank you for letting me be a part of this community in that way, and thank you for letting me be a contributor. And for being, being part of it as well.
Thank you, Raul. Any other comments from counsel?
Both of you.
Yes. I have just, we don't have any first readings of or, ordinances, so there's just one more motion that I would entertain at this point.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Trithuie.
Support.
Support by Hookstra. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.